So.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, hi.
Can you hear me?
Okay. Can you hear me?
It's not good.
Okay, my screen being, uh, people, Lauren, I can see you and Steve, I can see you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Back Ted, I see you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just writing this down, so, yeah, yeah, so Jamie, can I get your phone number?
Kathy.
Okay.
Joanne, I see you over here.
Okay. Okay, I will, um, try to get the answer before you call you back today, okay?
Nobody working, picking up audio.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Very well, please, while this gets all going.
Let's go button up there again, the host one. So our chat is here.
Kathy?
John? Yes?
Uh, what number are you?
What's, what number?
You need to hit your mute.
Okay. I thought I did, thank you.
Okay, well, I guess when we're ready to start the meeting here, this is the Carroll County meeting here, um, mayors, and we traditionally always-
Do what?
The legions, and I don't see any reason to change.
Um, I don't know, you'd have to call and ask, I'm not, I'm not sure, I don't know anything about them.
Oh.
Person, you know, everybody needs to mute their buttons.
Okay, so I'm gonna state that the legions, okay? I, the legions, through the flag, on the United States of America, I think it's republi, or which is saying, one, I, of, in, for, justice for all.
It just muted the mic, so it's you.
Fine.
I'm all with you.
Okay, we're all muted except for me, I guess, now how's Lauren and Steve get on, Ted?
Though, when they wanna talk, they'll have to unmute themselves.
Okay. Well, I'll get my agenda here. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of the April twentieth, twenty twenty meeting.
Motion to approve.
Okay, good, thank you, Steve. Lauren, can you give me a second?
Got unmuted, I'll second that.
Okay, good, now we're all working, okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of April twentieth, twenty twenty. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. We have quite a few things here of payroll claims and all the claims, Steve, you've been wanting to usually just do them all at one time.
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll do a double motion to approve both payroll claims and approve all other claims.
Okay, Steve, there's one, one down there that, uh, I don't know quite how to, how to handle this, but, uh, the miscellaneous funds claim in the amount of one hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-six cents.
Okay.
Most of that is for architectural fees, that's why it's so big, but there's a, a few things in there that, that I would like to look back over again, just on the, on the claims, um.
Okay.
Looking at these at home, and, uh, saw amounts, but I couldn't actually see the claim sheet, so, uh, if it's all right, Steve, I'd like to approve everything except for that, uh, that one, and then give me time to look it over, I don't know how to handle it, Ted? Is Ted on? I see Ted.
I'm good with that, Bill.
Okay. Uh, Ted, can you, uh, you give us a, uh, can you give me a, a, a handle list so we can have a little time to look over those claims?
You mean, uh, later than the meeting?
Well, I don't know, I just wanna make sure that, um, yeah, um, I have it in my hand here right now, um.
I can add to my motion and have you approve it at a later date.
Is that all right, Ted?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll put that in my motion.
Okay, so your motion is, uh, to approve all claims and payroll, uh, and, uh, the miscellaneous funds, can be approved, uh, after further review, right?
Affirmative.
Okay, uh, I think, uh, for the purpose of being, uh, real open and having everybody know what's going on, I need to probably read through each of these, what, what the amount are. Payroll claims for, uh, a date three-seven, twenty twenty are two hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred forty-one dollars and forty-three cents. Payroll claim for four-eighteen, twenty twenty, two-twenty-one, nine-eighty-three, ninety-seven, that's two hundred twenty-one thousand. Uh, early claims are nine thousand, fifty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Uh, early claims, second one is for four thousand, eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. Then, claim was in the amount of one thousand, nine hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Again, Vincent X claims is six thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars and forty-three cents. HSA claim are thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. County annual claims are two hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. Highway claim for ninety thousand, four hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. The miscellaneous funds one that I wanted to look over just a little more is a hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. And out of that, uh, elevators architecture is a hundred and sixteen, yeah, thousand of it, so that's the biggest amount of it. Approval of, uh, two thousand eighteen certificate sale is two thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Again, approval of two thousand eighteen certificate sales, one thousand, three hundred fifty dollars and seventy-six cents. Tax refunds is one thousand, seventy-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. So, I have a motion from Steve, do I have a second from Lauren?
Should have been another ninety-two thousand dollar.
I got a second from Lauren, again, to approve all payroll and claims with the exception of miscellaneous funds of one hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-six cents, which, uh, I can approve shortly after the meeting here, uh, upon further review. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Now, we have, next on the agenda is approval of primary election polling places. Let me find that anywhere. Okay, the primary election polling places, um, let me read it, uh, for everyone, notice of primary election voting places, yeah, undersigned Board of Commissioners of Carroll County, State of Indiana, do hereby give notice that a general election will be held on Tuesday, June second, twenty twenty, between the hours of six AM and six PM Eastern Standard Time, at the following designated places in the various vote centers of Carroll County, Indiana. Burlington, at the Burlington Community Center. Camden, at the Camden Community Building. Flora, at the Flora H Building. Delphi, at the Carroll County Courthouse, and at the Delphi United Methodist Church. And Yeoman, at the Yeoman United Methodist Church. A registered voter of Carroll County may visit any of the Carroll County Vote Centers on Election Day. I would entertain a motion, one way or the other, on approving those, um, voting places.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Lauren Hilton has made the motion, and, uh, um, Steve, huh, Steve, you're on my screen, you just jumped to a different face there.
Yeah, yeah, I second.
You're like Steve. And Steve Pearson seconds, all in favor of that, uh, motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, those will be to the vote center. Our next item is, uh, health insurance, uh, Beth, could you, uh, give us just a little introduction into that, what we're doing on this? Yeah. It's time for us to be doing renewal.
I was muted. It is time for us to renew.
Mute me for a second.
It's time for us to renew, um, Bill, we had met with Apex, and they want to know what are, um, what we are going to be doing, 'cause they need to move on.
Has everybody been satisfied with it?
Well, I don't think anybody will ever have any everybody satisfied with, Steve.
True.
Apex could, um, would, uh, be our broker for many different kinds of insurance or different companies. It's just strictly at the, what the Board wants to do, uh, I know that, uh, we had a, we had a poll taken, and, um, there were findings on it, I know that, uh, I had several people say to me later, well, they didn't get a chance to vote on the poll, but, uh, I think it did give us some indications of where we are. Probably the biggest factor that was, um, sought after by most of our employees, or a substantial number, was an affiliation with some hospital, or a contract with a certain hospital, which would, um, make it easier for the insurance to work. At this time, though, it's, it's going to be, I mean, there was two things that came to the top of the voting, one of them was, uh, one of them was, um, contracted a hospital, and the other one was low, um, deductible. And if we change our insurance from the policy that we have now, from the type we have now, that deductible is going to go way up, uh, which, I don't know, anybody wants to do that. It has been a substantial savings for the county, and I'm of the opinion that this savings would be, um, a good thing to reinvest, uh, part of that, or a portion of that savings back to, um, might, uh, back with our employees. We could help with the, with the family plan, uh, to provide more insurance for our employees who want, want to have coverage with their families, and I, because right now, it's the cost of, um, insurance through our program, uh, for families is prohibitive, it's just, for most, most folks, it's just way too expensive. Uh, so either they have to have their families on a spouse's insurance, or unfortunately, they have, we have families that just, um, rather than the employee that works for us, that they have no insurance on their children, and that's, that's scary. That's a, a bad situation. So those are some options that we could weigh, um. What do you think, Steve and, and, uh, Lauren?
I'd be in favor of that, anything to help our employees with an insurance, 'cause my work there costs me a whole pay period.
That's right, that's right, there's some people, if, if you would want to insure your family, you're pretty well, just put your paycheck into your insurance program. Lauren, do you have a comment?
Well, definitely wanna keep the lower deductibles. Yeah, it's a good thing to offer, it could offer more in the, in the HSA plan, uh, we could, we could build out a little bit for them, help them, keep our premiums as low as that, and we also, you know, got, remember the council, but we have budgeted for insurance.
Right.
Big within those guidelines.
Sure. I, I believe, and Beth, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what's budgeted for insurance. Had we not gone for this type of program, we would be looking at, uh, way over a million by now, for that, uh, that cost. Or we had to raise the deductions for the employee to such a high level, that, uh, I don't think our insurance would be worth having. So, insurance is a big, big, uh, big nut to crack, and we, we have spent enormous amounts of time on it, I know, this year, I've met with our representatives in insurance, and, uh, I have quite a bit of faith in them, they, they, um, are not stuck on this program, they can sell us any other program we want. But this is a program that, uh, offers the county a great deal of savings, and it does create, um, oh, it, if you have, if you have a, a major claim on it, why, it, it's gonna take a while for them to negotiate this, this, uh, bill down to a reasonable amount, and that causes some fear, it causes some worry, you're getting bills from the hospital and all that, all this time, for huge amounts of money. So, I don't like it from that standpoint at all, so I don't know what else to do. Steve, Lauren, input?
Yeah, I agree, I think it's, uh, it's hard for the employee to do it, and we gotta rely on the auditor's office to assist them all the time.
Yep.
We did, um, chat, and one of the employees that is saying suggestion to offer more in the HSA is a good thing.
Yeah, HSA would be, I think, great.
Right, I think we, what, we give them a thousand, we ask for fifteen? Um, I think they only ended up getting a thousand, didn't they?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I'd like to see that go up.
We tried two thousand the year before. Yeah, very good.
Right. Yeah.
Well, I've been hearing rumors that the council's trying to give, um, I don't know if it's true or not, but trying to give the local businesses money. If we can do that, I think we can afford to give more to our employees on the HSA. I don't know, that's just hearsay.
Well, I could, there was discussion about it at council meeting, um, ways to aid local businesses, and I know that the, Delphi is looking at that, and the community of Flora has already done it. And I think you're right, Steve, that, um, our employees deserve to be treated well also.
Well, I think given, to the HSA, would, uh, by the employee to have a, a say in what they can do with that, uh, so that would give them some personal responsibility, uh, which I think is a good choice.
That is, Lauren, that's good, um. One thing that I have heard is, well, if we put all this, if we put extra money into family plans, well, there's a lot of them that don't have family claims, so they're not gonna benefit at all from it. If we put it in the HSA, uh, everybody would get something, everybody that's on the insurance program.
And I think having a contract with the hospital would help out a lot, too, and we just gotta figure which hospital everybody would like.
Well, and then have one of our professionals to actually negotiate that contract, because that, that would be the, uh, the big problem with it, is getting that contract in place, although they are doing it, I guess, from what I hear, with some hospital, those in the State of Indiana have agreed to take on these, these type of insurance policies.
I think the Sheriff's Department's got a, a little bit of a contract for the inmates in White County Hospital, so they might work with us.
That's interesting, Steve, I didn't know that. That, that's, I'm glad to hear that, we'll, we'll have to work on that. Well, I guess the decision comes down to us now, is we're, we're reaching the end of our term of our insurance, and do we wanna go for one more year, uh, or for another year, uh, with AR, or do we, do we wanna, uh, be making a serious change?
I think we just need to stay where we're at right now, since we're all in a virtual meeting at the time right now, it's kinda hard to go through the paperwork, and you're not allowed to leave home.
Yeah, it is. Lauren?
Uh, I, probably for now, with the situation where it is, if we get that increase in the HSA, it's like a really good option for us to help them out.
Right, then we can always add the, the contract with the hospital at a later date.
Well, we have, um, we have about every year, I think, asked for an increase in the HSA for our employees, and it's been the council that has held that down, so, that's not a decision that we'll just make, we have the request, and, and see what happens.
Yes.
Another question that is, how about the ones that don't carry the insurance, could they be compensated with HSA? We had looked into that several years ago, and that is not really allowed, because you're helping with the, um, deductible. It's not just something that you're giving to somebody.
Okay, I'm sitting six feet away from, from our auditor, and I'm hearing about four different tracks going through, so it's tough, I, I can't even understand what that was, what did you say, Beth? Okay. Oh, our employees that do not have the insurance. Is that somebody online where they've inputted that? Uh, well, there, there's a point, is if they, if they don't have our insurance, uh, then they are not eligible by law to participate in the benefits of it. Well, if it's the law, that's the way we have to follow. We, we could check it out, find out. So anyway, uh, we can approve the insurance as it is, and then seek, uh, a higher S H A for our employees, and also find out for sure what the law is on that, as far as non-participating employees that do not participate in our insurance, if there's any benefit we can give them. Okay, okay, so I guess I can call for a vote, what, uh, what you two think?
I think we're all kind of in agreement to sustain where we are, and like you mentioned, to, uh, get a higher S S A, eh, I can't even say it, HSA, and, um, look into the other issue and possibly a contract, so that'll be my motion.
Sounds good to me, I'll second that.
Okay, so to make sure that we're all understand, uh, Steve, Lauren has seconded, to the effect that we will continue with our insurance as it is now, and we will look into ways to increase the HSA for, um, either our employees or for everyone, I mean, for our employees participating in the insurance program, or if there's something to do for others, uh, as well. Am I right on that motion?
Yes.
Okay, so then I would call for a vote, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
An aye, was unanimous. Um, next item is, um, COVID nineteen, and, uh, I guess that's where we're going from now, uh, we have a meeting coming up in two weeks, are we planning on doing it the same way? Uh, what about the courthouse being open, and?
I'd like to do a, I'd like to do a soft opening of the courthouse, bringing employees back first, with the recommendations of the Health Department's guidelines.
Okay, um, what is the due to, uh, we can start to open things back up?
I think it's next, why about that now?
Whatever two weeks is.
Is that two weeks?
I think so.
Yeah.
I agree, some of the employee back, as Steve says, we need to have our precautions in place before we bring anybody back in.
Correct, we need to have the plan, and everybody needs to follow it, and if you get caught not following it, you're gonna be, uh,
Well, not, I, you tell Beth that you have the things out, that you go six feet, just, there's a lot of things that, that you stop.
Yeah, we have, um, been looking at, um, on the, on the internet for companies that sell the, uh, plexiglass screens that, uh, you can put up in front of people, so that, um, a barrier in the, uh, people coming in and the employee, and, um, I believe we need that, um, to follow the rules, we need to have that at every office counter.
Um, they're at Purdue, they're hanging them from their ceiling, it's a little, little change, otherwise, if you ever need to remove them, you can remove them, it's nothing permanent. They, they work out really good.
Maybe see, can you hear me?
Okay, uh, we have, um, the Health Department, is that what you said, Beth? Okay, bring them both on, that'd be good.
I'd like to talk to, and I'm, Valerie's down with Mike, that does the voice in the Health Department.
Okay.
I really, really encourage not opening much up, with even with employees, um, yesterday, I got four hundred and fifteen cases given to me at one time, a lot of those ended up neck and knee, but we're talking, we got fifty in the county now, and we're not saying those are all Packers, because they aren't. I got ten more this morning, and I've got more since I've been here, I haven't even had time to go back in it. I think if we open it up, we're just asking, we already have some problems from the weekend, that wasn't supposed to happen, that involved officer getting exposed, and maybe two other officers getting exposed, people going where they're not supposed to, and, uh, I think I've had calls this morning already from somebody who's been exposed to over the weekend, and grandchildren exposed, and it's, until right now, has not stopped, because people calling, they were around exposed people, so, I got files made on these first twenty-five out of the four fifteen, but that is counting our first twenty-five, so we really have fifty people now, now can count what's come in today. And so, I did, an incident I had that I'd like to explain, is I had a man, it wasn't a Packer, so it was another place, the man was exposed, he took him home on quarantine, April fourth, and his wife was tested eight first, and is positive now, so that's how far apart it took her to get the COVID from her husband. Some of them can get it a lot, days sooner than that, um, I think they're both healthy people, she was positive on the first of May, and that was almost a month in between, and, and living in the same house, so, it's going to spread, and I know we can't stay close to it for- And I know we can't stay close to it forever, but I just feel like if we open it too soon, we're going to, we're already asking just what happened over the weekend. People eating outside, being served and had to stop that. And, uh, people getting upset over it. And the officers, three different officers, that a DNR guy. I was in here four hours yesterday on my computer here. And in that time, this phone was ringing off the wall. And normally we know, probably don't get any calls. And it was all about somebody exposed to somebody else. I answer all of them, but I just feel like we need real, before we bring even partial info. Because you don't know where everybody is. And I, I know everybody's not been staying completely home because they're not quarantined. But if they get out, just like the guy with his grandkids stayed all night with somebody that was positive at Packers. Now he's actually, grandkids exposed. Anyway, really busy the first hour we were here this morning. Of people calling wanting to know the rules now. So the rules kind of changed and I just think we need to stay home. Not bring it back too soon or we'll be, I don't know, be.
Yeah, but we're running into an issue of paying employees, bringing them in. And I'm afraid we're going to run out of money bringing employees in working overtime. You know, because I know the offices are needing the help. Um, I understand the spread of it. Trust me. Um, so you guys know, I was exposed over the weekend by a family member. So I'm now quarantined for seven days. Um, I'd like to try to get us, at least in a soft opening in the next couple of weeks. We're getting a lot of people wanting to use the transfer station. We, we gotta get a computer for that. But I'd like to see us, at least in two weeks, do a, a soft opening to, you know, this is going to sound bad, but to get rid of the overtime open. Because we're going to run out of money and we're going to run out of money fast.
Well, we can't, we can't do very much when bringing people back, so you get a lot more results. There was 2,300 people tested as Packers. The one woman had been tested four days prior. And then Packers insisted everybody get tested and she was positive then. And four days prior, she'd been negative. So if you, if they hadn't made her test, just make the rule, well, everybody test, even though she tested four days prior, then she would be out here doing a normal thing and, and spreading it. And if Packers opens, they want to get back with the negative people. But if she would have been called back as a negative from her first test four days prior, she would have been in the factory closing everybody. So it, it defeated the purpose. So until we see those results and we've got over 2,000 people was tested and they're coming in. I mean, you know, I, like I said, I got 415 yesterday. And that's not kind of a drop in the bucket with 2,000. I think we've got to, we've got to have all those results back, which is going to be a busy weekend here for that. I think if we wait with people testing negative and four days later testing positive, they're just going to be exposing more people to the public. Please. And if you're talking amongst yourself, please. The other thing is that they did say try to rotate. That is what I am doing. It's taking care of extra music. So I'm really issue. And we need to be wearing masks when we go out around people. And that would help some, help a lot.
Joyce, did you say that, uh, so far you have results from the, uh, 2,200 or so that were tested out at, uh,
I only, I got 400 yesterday, 415 yesterday. Mine was 25 of them. They had included what I already had, but those aren't all from, not all from Packers yet. Till I go in the computer and then call the person and ask. I've got 35 laying here to call today to ask where they work. If they work at Packers, then they're, I can tell about how many, but there were 2,300 people tested.
Okay. Uh, so I want to make sure I understand, Joyce. The, the 400 plus you have, are those ones who actually have tested positive or just 400 results?
No, it was 415 results. And, uh, out of that 415, which I don't know that they all work at Packers, though, till I go in, this 25 of them is positive. But I don't know how many, there's a few names on there. I saw two or three that I know don't work at Packers. The rest of them probably do, but we're only talking 400 of 2,300 results back there.
Okay.
And the only positives I see is this 25 that I have, 26 from yesterday, but I got 10 more here and I don't know till I look at, uh, till I, I don't know till I call each one of them, where they do work. But we know how many was tested up there. They had tested 1,100 the first day and 1,200 the second day.
Okay.
The results all should be in here this week. I'm sure I'll be getting them all day long today, basically, Thursday. I don't have a list of employees, so I don't know who works up there.
Our attorney Ted Johnson has finished us with a, uh, synopsis here of the governor's decree orders. And of course, we need to have, when we open, we need to have screening at the door. Okay, yeah. And I, I think the, we all had, each of us commissioners have had this. But, um, it just needs, I think, restated that we need, we need to have screening at the door. And, um, everybody needs to wear masks, they say. Am I forgetting something here? And we need to have, um, of course, hand sanitizing stations set up everywhere. We need to have plexiglass at every counter. We need to have, uh, six foot marks on the floor of don't stand in line closer than that. Or, uh, another suggestion made is to, uh, only admit people one at a time into the offices. Now that height result of more people being bunched together in the, uh, malls out here, kind of reminds me of when I look at Walmart and they're saying we need to maintain six feet apart and everything. And then they close one door so everybody comes in the same door. I don't understand this. I don't understand the, thinking some of these things that we're working. Certainly we can all agree on that there are certain things that would help quite a bit. The, I think the plexiglass shields are, are a very important part of it. And I think disinfecting counters and things like that where they're right in front of where we're working, where people come up and put their hands in and get their papers out, file things and it's just things that have to be touched. Now, Steve mentioned ones that hang from the ceiling. You can also get one that actually just sit on the desk. Put them somewhere. Either fine or me. I think we should look at, uh, cost and time it would take to either hang or set them all up. We gotta assemble them in some way. I think there's things we have to do to get this, uh, get this ready to do that. And I think that we should take that action as commissioners this week. Joyce, I see you've got a box around your name here. Are you having more comment?
I think, well, I'll, I'll say one thing and then Valerie's here now, but she was trying to talk from down the mics, but she couldn't get you better. We have to remember too, not all of those people are from our county at Packers. They come from Cass, to Canoe. We only have a percentage there. Um, I think 15%, 15 to 20% of Packers employees are Carroll County. And so that would be about 300 to 400 positive. If, could be Carroll County would be positive. And I don't expect them all to be. We hope not. But until we know that, we're not sure. You know, that's a possibility of three to 400 out there being Carroll. The rest of them will go to the other county. I won't get them. Just Carroll County. And so Valerie wants to talk to you.
Okay.
Mike and I went through the offices today, just the way the offices are right now. Because I know they want to move offices around.
Yeah, we gotta deal with now, though.
I am. So that would be 35 sneeze guards. For?
35 shields?
She, 35 shields. Sneeze guard, yeah. We looked at hanging them, but the way that offices are positioned with their desks, they won't hang over where we need them to hang. So the ones that are, um, desktop would be the best. And we've looked at two places and you're talking between $450 and $5,000 just for those.
For 35 of them would be up to $5,000, you're saying?
Between $4 and $5,000, depending on which place we get them from and, um, how big they have to be for each office. The hanging ones are just not really practical. We try to focus on, you know, both. The, the ones sitting on the counter would be the best. You know, we also have to be able to get PPE for everyone. And that's been difficult. We've had it ordered. Your mask.
Okay.
Mike had his ordered for almost three weeks. And I've got 50 left and of surgical masks. We, we talked about temps. There is a, a company that has a temperature, um, walk through temperatures to take temperatures for people. Now, are we going to start? We have to ask ourselves, okay, we're just going to do employees first. But then when you open it up slowly, are you going to ask everyone to walk through and be temperatures taken, like outside visitors? And then who's going to sit there and man that all day?
Well, we need to decide that. Somebody, somebody needs to be there. Whether we need to, uh, request a sheriff's deputy or, uh, find somebody from here in the courthouse or summon them to help department or, it need, there needs to be somebody at the door there that's taking temperatures and making sure everybody that comes in signs in so that we have a record of who's been in here in case we have an outbreak, we can try to track it down.
Right. That was in our bullet points that we sent. Also, um, you know, all the offices have to make sure that there's social distancing, distancing between their desks. And I think they're all moving them at this point, trying to do that, to open up slowly. And by the time we get these PPEs in place, your mask, try to get your mask and your sneeze guards. And we need some help from the custodian trying to put the distance. We need markers on the floor where people can stand, you know, to come in. But you've got your most vulnerable people are all over 65 that work here, close to it. The majority and their health conditions. So are you thinking about maybe opening up slowly with the, um, elected officials and one person and then see how that goes? And then open up again with the next phase?
Well, I, I think we need to leave that up to the elected official in the office. Um, they know what they need the most. Like Beth, she's got two others and one day she can have one and one day she can have the other. We do need to change the custodian's hours. I say we need to do that today. Bring him back starting tomorrow, work in his 40 so he can start working on some of this stuff.
Because I'm sure these sneeze guards are going to have to be probably put together. And that's going to be a lot of work. But, you know, I don't see, I don't see really Monday would, is going to be able to open as of right now, because we don't have our numbers. I was thinking, you know, next Monday is the 11th. I think we need to push it back. We'll find out maybe the end of the week if we can push it back another week. Because we don't have any, you know, any protocols put in place. We don't have any, um, safe parts put in place for everyone. Are we going to ask the, I mean, do you want?